Until the end and trying to go back to that. If you ask something that's going to be clarified later in the presentation, they'll just let you know at that time. Again, a lot of people, so I would just basically ask that everyone be respectful and cordial of the other guests and direct your questions at Two Cities Staff to either Greg or Rich or Bill is here as well, rather than each other as guests. If someone has a question or makes a statement, I just don't want it to get out of hand where you're having a different meeting down there than we're having up here. So, I would ask that when I have that. I don't use it too often. Also, when Greg comes around, we'll ask that when he gives you the mic and you ask your question, to please start by stating your name and address for our records and then go on with your question. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll have a period as well for just for basic comments or ending follow-up questions. As you'll see at the end of the presentation, they've got our contact information as well so the city can be contacted. So, I think that pretty much covers what my portion and I'll turn it over to you guys.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming. We weren't sure if we were going to have one person or if it seemed we certainly had more than that. We do appreciate all of you for coming. As the mayor said, we want this to be a dialogue. And this, Rich and I, and I've had a couple of phone calls and the council and the mayor have had some where it's like us talking to you. So, if during the presentation, as the mayor said, if there's something on the screen we have a question about or something that either I say or Rich says, raise your hand and we'd like to do it right then. If you wait till the end, you might forget your questions and we don't want that to happen. If you have just a comment or a statement you want to make, that we do ask that you wait until the end for those. For questions, feel free to interrupt. So, this is basically, we've noticed that went out, we'll just go ahead and begin starts with our presentation. It's going to be kind of back and forth between Rich and I, so it will be loose and informal and that's the way we want it. Before we get in, Rich is going to deal with most of the numbers, the dollars. We will be talking about those mainly. What I'm going to at least start with is to give a little bit of background and history of how we got to where we are basically tonight. First of all, there's been a very long history between the city and the township we've got in the audience through. The agreement that was the last one that was implemented actually was in 1977, terminated in 2012. Now, there's disagreements right away on that between the city and the township. The city has terminated, the township says it is not. There's differences of opinion on the wording of that, of the agreement itself. There are actually documents where we had before, they go back into the sixties where there are agreements between the city and the township regarding water and I also believe sewer as well. So, there is a very long history in there. As part of that agreement, after a period of 11 years, there was an agreement to establish a formula that would help both sides in developing what will be the rates for the next year and also what we call, true enough from the previous year in terms of cost, that there was agreement between the two parties. That formula that we knew that was offered was for a period of 24 years until 2012 when it do expires and is no longer utilized by the city. The formula itself at times was contentious because there were disagreements by both sides in terms of interpretation or how certain things were.
My question would be, since the county doesn't have a standalone water system, why would there be a termination between?
Well, it's the word. What's the question? Okay, oh, and that's my fault. I'm supposed to be giving you that.
Well, since the county does not have a standalone water system, why would there be a termination between the two parties?
You want to answer that, Bill? Maybe more of a legal question than it is.
Yeah, the intent of tonight's meeting is not to get into legal issues that are currently being litigated in the 26th Circuit Court. So, we want to try to stay away from getting too technical tonight. We just want to try to put out there informationally where the city's at and really this has been prompted by questions that have been raised by citizens, not legally, but as to the rate issue more so than anything else. Everybody's getting their bill, the bill's going up, everybody's wondering why and they want answers. And so, our staff has done the best to answer those questions, but when it got to a point where more questions were being fielded and some township residents were asking those questions of the cities in terms of how the township set their rates, we felt it was wise to have this informational meeting to try to help explain that. But, we're not going to mitigate through questions or answer through questions legally what that means. If we did that, we'd be here not only tonight, but we'd be here for the foreseeable future. The court will take those issues up and so if there's questions directed as to legally what's happening, that's not what the intent is basically.
Yeah, and that wasn't my intent. I was just wondering how if you're in contract with each other and the county doesn't have their own, I'm sorry, the county does not have their own standalone water system, they are, I mean, we're being told, county citizens are being told that the rates are what they are because the city is charging that.
Yeah, and we will get into that later on. I think, what's that? So, we don't want to get into all those details, especially, you know, the legal issues. Those are ones that has to do with the wording of the agreement. And one thing is, the city has not and cannot disconnect water or sewer from the township. That we're not allowed to do. So, it has to do more with how rates are determined, not whether you have water or sewer, because we cannot cut you off. Or when I say we, or you, it gets to the township who then sends it on to you, either water or sewer service. So, that's a slight difference there. Once the city terminated the agreement, when the draft agreement was terminated, we wanted to look at our rates or we knew we were going to have to establish new rates, but the problem was we didn't want to go out and just begin to set those. One thing we hadn't had done in a number of years was to have a rate study. To have somebody, a third party, a just-in-three-party come in, look at our rates, look at our water and sewer needs, both for our plants, our collection and distribution systems, and determine if what kind of rates we should have, are what we were charging sufficient, were they not? When we did that, we did ask the township if they also wanted to be a party to this because they have the same consultant, Gosling Zubek, a well-respected engineering firm and has done a number of these throughout the state, that to participate in the overall rate study, but they declined at the time to participate. So, the city went ahead with only looking at the city itself and its rates and its costs and its revenues. The draft agreement was finished in 2013, presented to City Council and Gosling Zubek at the time proposed rates that would provide for current and future maintenance, replacement and operation needs. However, when these five people got that report and looked at the numbers and even Rich and I were taken aback officially, they were very much taken aback and said, there's no way that this can happen with these numbers. And much of it was generated by the fact that we have a capital inclusion plan that we do for all our city facilities and departments every year for six-year plans and water and sewer is one of the largest components of that plan. And we were looking at around $3.6 million per year, what was needed if we were going to do everything that our plan said ultimately needs to be done. There was no way that reasonable rates were going to finance $3.6 million. The council told us that, said go back and rework later. That's primarily what Rich did as the city engineer. Now, while we were, that was being directed to us, we were, I went wrong right there, under, in negotiations with the township and had various meetings. And part of those negotiations, we're looking at options, other ways, rather than what we had been doing as business for the previous 35 years. Basically, we sell water to the township, the township water, the sewer services, they turn it on and sell those to their customers within their jurisdiction. One of the ideas that came up was what we called a unified proposal, a system proposal. Basically, what it would do and the premise behind it was that no matter where you were, what jurisdiction, how close or how far away you were from our water plant or equipment plant, everybody made the same rate, whether it was township or city. With the idea that each jurisdiction would still maintain control or ownership of their individual system. One of the first things we looked at, which Rich did, was try to put together a stairway and do the methodology and the calculation of coming up with a rate that would be a uniform rate everybody would pay on a per thousand gallon basis, for water, for sewer. This was not an easy task. It's been a long time, but came up with a number which we knew was not a final number, but it gave us a number that we could go to and say, is this even workable, viable? Our conclusion was yes, when we said this was the first step, a long way away from ever having a unified system because there were, for every answer that we might go off right now, we had probably 10 questions and we knew the township also had 10 questions. So, what we wanted to do was to sit down and discuss those concepts and those, we make a list, township make a list, we'll sit down, see if this will even work. If it has any chance, then maybe that is the best idea, maybe the worst. Unfortunately, we never got there because we had put together a list, we asked the township for one, and before we ever were able to sit down and talk about it, we received, does this idea have any traction to it? We received a letter which was from the township's attorney which stated that the township had looked at this and rejected this proposal basically out of hand, calling it a fait accompli, a done deal, and that it was a takeover of the township water and sewer system. We were taken aback by that because one, a fait accompli is only, that assumes it's a done deal, which is not an easy thing to do when you have two elected bodies that must vote on it and they never had anything to vote on. At that point, did you have a question, sir?
Gary Cardika, Law &amp; Politics Channel, I just want to know what you're saying is to have the meeting when the letter was supposed to read to me and the township simply just said, no, we're not going to.
Now, what was that question you said? He just was verifying what I said about that letter. He was at the meeting, apparently when the letter must have been read out. At that point, at the initiative of our mayor, he felt that there may be a misunderstanding regarding that, the idea that we were putting out, and he requested and we did have a joint meeting of the township board and the city council in January of last year. Again, the proposal was presented.
Can you turn the mic on?
Well, it is on, but.
Oh, it's your mouth thing.
Can you hear now?
Yes. A little bit. This was not on. Please.
Something just went on. Okay, so, thank you for letting me know. The meeting was out at the Apex. We talked about the proposal again, the township board asked questions, made comments, and in the end rejected the proposal again. And at that point, we moved ahead as a city with our whole focus being on developing a rate structure that would apply to both, to all of our customers, those in the city and not you as an end user, but to the township who is our customer, because that's who we sell water and sewer service to, is the township, not individually to each of you who are from, in the township that have water and sewer service. So, that's where we then began in earnest in late, very early 2014 to prepare that in that mix of paper.
As Greg indicated, once we determined that from the township, that there was no interest in any type of unified system, we looked at implementing a water and sewer rate system for all of our city customers. That was developed and presented to the Upper Eastern Council, it was adopted in March of 2014. Even that rate, and we had proposed $10.30 per thousand gallons as the commodity charge for water and sewer service. Council felt that that was still a fairly large increase and elected to have us do it over a two-year period. So, in year one, the rate's for $9.74 per thousand gallons and this last July 1st, the rates increased, which is beginning year two, to $10.30 per thousand.
And that last rate increase went into effect July 1st of this year. Yeah, so, to the $10.30.
Oh, the adoption.
Very much for that, Mr. Wilkie, does the city have a minimum rate?
What we do, and I'll explain it a little bit later, but we have a $30 ready-to-serve charge. We used to have a minimum charge for 6,000 gallons of consumption. When we ran the report, we were finding, we found that over half of our, excuse me, 20% of our customers were at that minimum bill charge, minimum bill or below. And in fact, half of those, about 10% of our customers, were using less than 3,000 gallons per quarter. So, with these rates, we also implemented a ready-to-serve charge and I'll explain that later, but the ready-to-serve charge for a residential customer is $30 per quarter, $10 a month, $30 per quarter. And then your commodity, the volume you actually use, if you use 1,000 gallons or 10,000 gallons, you're paying for that on top of the ready-to-serve charge.
There is no minimum per thousand gallon rate anymore. If you use 1,000 gallons, that's what you charge if you use 6,000, 10,000, whatever it is. And that's what the charge for, with the ready-to-serve charge added on top. As Rich said, getting to that after a whole day.
Greg, our city manager, did send a letter to the township outlining what the new rate structure was and that the rates could be charged to them would be $9.74, which was the appropriate rate at that time and the letter was sent. Upper Eastern Township issued a letter and they forwarded to the township rejecting the new rates. And the township continued to pay at the same rates they have been since 2010-11 of $6.38 per thousand gallons. Of course, next billing cycle, we issued an invoice to the township. They didn't pay the invoice. They paid at the 2010-11 rates and therefore we were in a failure to pay. We ended up with two council authorizing, our city attorney to initiate litigation against the township.
My name is Michael Limberston and I live down on Sinequa on Highway 23 South. What was the factors that were brought together to come up with a $30?
We will, we will get through any of the numbers here.
What was the structure to come up with that amount?
We will, we'll get into that.
Terms of the ready-to-serve charge.
Yeah, we will get into that. We just had to say yes.
Quite right. If you're traveling across or just coming out of thin air.
Well, the city conducted the rate study. The rate charged to Upper Eastern Township were held at those established 2010-11. City issued letters to them to extend that rate while the rate study was underway and until new rates were adopted, which was in 2014, and billing to the township and these new rates started in May of 2014. From 2011 through March of 2014, there was no increase in cost from the city. The township had been paying the city of all fees at the same rate, $6.38 per thousand. The rate they charged to their customers increased 23.8%. This is chart and this has been provided a number of times from township. It basically shows where the city rates were. We went from $6, $7 and 7 cents, if my math is right, 7 cents, 7 cents, to low over $9.
You can see in the middle one, as far as township rates charged by the city, they held the same up until May of 2014 when the new rates went into effect. So, there was no increase and that was done voluntarily by the city. So, we did that, I sent a letter each year to the township saying, because the rate study took longer, working through the process took longer, so we did not, we agreed to hold the rates until we had the new rate established.
My name is Tom Van Byn and I'm a city resident, but my question is, are you charging the township a ready-to-serve fee?
Yes, they do. For their points of connection, for water, where it goes out and sewer where it comes back in, we tried them. I think, what is it, five?
Twelve, $6,000 a quarter is what the ready-to-serve charge is.
Total bill of 500 or something, but I think they're roughly five and five or so sewer and water until they are charged.
I'm Dale Adrian, Dallas, Ohio. The whole time this was going on, was there any continuing negotiations with the township or did they just cut you off and said, we're done?
Once, once the rates were set and we went into litigation, there has not been any further negotiation at all once it got into litigation. Prior to that, I do not believe, and I couldn't go on because of the dates, but after we had the joint meeting, I do not believe there were any further negotiations after that. That would have been January of '14.
After that, they voted down that letter again. The township, that was it, they were done, negotiated.
We have not negotiated since then.
Have you tried?
At that point, between the two, we were focused on getting the rate established to know what the rate was going to be, which is what we did, and then put back the council in March and we presented it one meeting. They were, felt that it was still a rate that they wanted to phase in over two years. We brought that back at the next meeting, which I think was still in March, second meeting in March.
And I guess just to clarify from my perspective, we did have one meeting with the township after the, after the meeting at the Apex where all of our councils, both of our councils were there, we had one meeting here. Marie and Norm, Norm Polley were here on behalf of the township and you and I and Rich were here on behalf of the city.
There was one more.
So, we did sit down and we discussed a few things. I don't have the minutes from that, but we did, we did discuss a few things. We went, took a short recess and then it really dissolved within like the next five minutes. So, it was a pretty brief meeting.
Any other questions?
The rate structure that we developed and the rates proposed to get from 2014 by City Council for all city customers utilized the same methodology that was developed by a consultant, Gosling Zubek for 2013 rate study. They, as Greg indicated, are a well-known, well-respected firm throughout North and West Michigan and have performed this service for a number of communities both in Michigan and in adjoining states. Rate structure that, as we developed it, includes an operation and maintenance cost for the water plant, the sewage plant, for our sewage collection system, our water distribution system, a debt service charge for water, debt service for sewer, billing service charge, an infrastructure maintenance charge, a ready-to-serve charge. And I'm going to explain that's there's a little bit. And the other ones are pretty much self-explanatory, some additional slides are later that we'll get into in more detail, but the infrastructure maintenance charge is basically set up to fund the maintenance, replacement of existing infrastructure, upgrading existing infrastructure in the distribution system and at the plant. As any company operation goes overtime, equipment wears out, materials need to be replaced and that's what that infrastructure maintenance charge was set up to address.
I was just going to say also that for equipment that, as equipment wears out, to bring it into what I call the 21st century, which increases our efficiencies, helps control costs. So, that's part of the reason that you do this and that's what any company does. They upgrade their equipment, they upgrade their computers, they upgrade as time goes on because it's a necessity in order to operate a business and do it effectively and efficiently. And our water and sewer systems are no different. They are a business.
The ready-to-serve charge is also a component that is directed towards operation and maintenance. It's basically another component of the infrastructure maintenance charge, but it was established to provide the funding needed to maintain water and sewer infrastructure in front of, in front of properties, just to be ready to serve them. It's charged to all properties vacant, unoccupied or in use. It was set at $30 per quarter and that was the number that we just pulled out of thin air. Basically, I looked at over 30 communities that do have a ready-to-serve charge in places out there and I looked at the average and we are below, well below the average, let me finish this taking out, we're well below the average of what those were for each meter size. Can we break it up between one, two, I believe, four? There's five different categories of meter size, up to six inch feet, which is the $500 per quarter ready-to-serve charge for that. So, but basically that is another component of the infrastructure. So, um, but basically that is another component of the infrastructure maintenance charge. But it was a, it was a way of addressing it flat across the community without, just trying to hold that, that needed revenue stream into the, into the, uh, commodity charge. It, it, it really contributed some of the, some of the fees. It wasn't, it wasn't very applicable. This was a more bearable manner to address those fees.
Uh, yeah, since it's going to be an extra possible, we get the mic back. Speak loud, state your name and address.
Yeah, initially, uh, a couple of different properties, the city and, and the township. The ready-to-serv charge, my question, I bought a vacant property from a tax sale and, uh, discussion about ready-to-serv charge with Mr. Williams. He would explain to me like what he just did. And then I asked where my liability was and everything that was covered by the ready-to-serv charge, I'm liable for anyway. Everything that's on my property, everything from the shop box, or.
Yeah, but we're, we're responsible for that from the shut off, basically on the street, that, that service coming back in from the main of the street to your property. So that's what, you know, part of that ready-to-serv charge addresses.
Right, now my question is, why are we getting charged a ready-to-serv charge when I'm liable for that part anyway?
You're not liable for that part of the street, we are. Sitting up here is one of them.
No, well, I'm, I'm sorry, but well, they, just so I can maybe help you a little bit, the ready-to-serv charge isn't for the equipment that's on your property. The ready-to-serv charge is to maintain enough, enough revenue, if you will, to come in to pay for the infrastructure of the entire thing. Because the way that it was explained to us is that from Zubek was that we have a lot of, uh, we have a lot of, uh, guys that go out on the boats, uh, during the year and they shut their water off and they leave, so they don't pay for any water while they're gone. And we have a lot of people that leave for the winter and go south and so they're not, they don't, they shut their water off, so they're not paying anything while they're gone. But we need to continue to establish enough revenue stream to come in to pay for the infrastructure and it's not fair to the people that are staying here 360 days or 365 to, to pay that, that, that extra for, for everyone that comes and goes. So it's basically a class B that everyone pays their part, whether you come and use the water or, I mean, it's just like, it's like your guarantee that when you do use the water, it's ready, hence the ready-to-serv.
There's, there's a cost to go over. Uh, there is a cost for us to be able to have, whether it's water, sewer service, available and ready to go at any time. Once the valve is turned and you put back on, uh, that you have water. And we have to go over and maintain that system to make sure you are ready. And then of course, now there's no valve to the sewer, but once it goes in, you're going to send that out to the sewer. And we have to maintain those lines, whether you're there or not. It, it, uh, anybody is a advocate, whether it's developed or not. So this has become a very common practice, uh, in, with, uh, water and wastewater utilities, uh, not only in Michigan, but I think across the country. Not that everyone has them, but it is becoming a very prevalent, uh, uh, procedure or, or charge that, that is, uh, allocated to the property. Uh, this is my first time doing it. It is a new charge.
The protocol says that, uh, the facility wasn't ready, ready to serve and I've been paying my ready-to-serv charges.
If it's a vacant property and there's water service there, you would still be responsible for that?
Right, I'm saying that the, uh, I took connection of the property, got it, said turn my water on. Because it was winter, it was unable to be turned on for months.
I think I, I think I know the situation, Dr. Holland.
Yeah, that's, that's handled. I was just wondering what the protocol was for the overall.
That's, that's basically the protocol, isn't it? You know, you know, we, we're responsible for that industry.
Yes.
Scott McKinsey, Worthmore. I got a question on the $30. You say that's good maintenance and healthy for that infrastructure. Doesn't the township maintain their own infrastructure?
No, this, this is for everything within the city. This is, this is not, this is not a charge of ours. I know that is charged by the township to you. We charge it to our customers, which in this case, the township is a customer. So it's like where, for my house, at the point of connection from the city system to my house, that's where the ready-to-serv charge is. With that in whatever size meter I have, it's based on, it's always varies. The township has points, has points of connection and at that point is where the ready-to-serv charge.
But each individual township resident is also getting charged at $30, right?
No, 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 not in this, no. No, so, uh, in every residential, the township pays a different rate for the $500 per, because they're talking about, like, flying the valve. But then, that's there, it's not, it's part of our bill. And again, we don't have any entity with, with how you bill. But oh, the charge we make is only for.
How's your results? Do you want to help?
Um. I don't know if there's more helping out, but what do you have to do? Doing, and then, uh, 1490 per person. Um, and what is, is there a minimum charge that the city charges the county? There is minimal, no, it's one, how much?
Uh, well, it's based on.
It's based on usage.
It's based on the usage. There are meters and each of the, there are meters at each, what, five or six points, uh, along our boundary. And at that point, those meters are then read on a quarterly basis and then that's what. There are some others as well because there are actually some individual homes in the township or property, not all homes, that are connected to us, but they are township customers by, uh, law standing agreement. So they're billed, uh, and so those are added in as well if they're suffering. Of course, for the most part, they have five or six meters. Those are read, are they going by us or the township? By us and then they're billed, uh, quarterly, uh, for each of those meters.
Jerry Hart, you can consider on that, not bad news, is Jerry Hart, you know? Uh, what, what I've kind of heard was that the township is concerned that we're paying for your, for your infrastructure and the city, that's much, that's much older than the township.
I think we could address that probably a little bit later than that.
We will address that. So, hold the thought and if we fail, bring it back up. And we will, next year we do it again. Uh, and there.
It's true, sitting about here, you might charge a thousand gallons of usage and a percentage, you might charge each of those components as follows. Other than, other than $10.38 per thousand gallons that we charge, uh, for usage, $2 makes sense to that is used to cover operation and maintenance for water. $2.49 for operation and maintenance of our sewage plants. And I know the land and collection, um, distribution systems. We went through and we categorized all the expenses that are paid by the, by the utility. And I guess big time to, to jump in here on this explanation. Our water and sewer utilities operate as enterprise funds. They're, they're not autonomous from the city, but they do function as their own funds. General fund does not transfer money into the water and sewer funds. Sewer funds and water funds don't transfer money out. They do pay, the utility funds do pay a bill issued by the city from the clerk's office for services rendered to the utility, um, for accounting, financial, risk recording, auditing, all those expenses. But other than that, the, the money that you pay for your water and sewer bill stays in those funds and those be, and in the city. So, uh, in addition to that, as I said, we all, we also have a $30 ready-to-serv charge per quarter and accordingly billing charge of $5.84, which is added. That's a, it's a flat fee for $10.30 for, is per thousand gallons usage. As we see below, it costs the city of Elpina, costs $5.72 per thousand to operate and maintain the collection and distribution system. Um, you know, this is slightly higher than what our actual cost is and the reason is, is a portion of that debt service, that 75 cents, that 81 cents, that's identified up there. A portion of that debt is, or debt incurred at you, at the plant, a lot of that is waste for our plant. To go back and, and break that out, it was a very difficult, daunting task that, uh, we didn't feel was worth the, the time for this, uh, pointed calculation. Basically, we'd get added into the water plant or sewer plant. It, it doesn't impact the bottom line number, it just where it's charged to. And the same thing for that infrastructure maintenance charge. You know, you, out of that dollar twenty, a portion of it is going to the water plant, a portion is going to the wastewater plant. So, you know, we say it costs $5.72, that's on the conservative side. Probably if you really, if you were able to break those numbers up, you'd probably be down in that five and a quarter, five thirty range someplace per thousand gallons for operating and maintaining our collection and distribution system. And that's to maintain the 80.6 miles of water made and 69.3 miles of sanitary sewer made. This is, we're going to look at the current city township rate. It looks like, well, city of Elpina's current water and sewer rates, water cost per, is $10.38. $4.95 for water, $5.30 for sewer. Understanding these rates are after July 1st of this year, I think township, uh, I think the township is paying 15.42 for water and sewer, plus the $8.36, uh, in the provisional charge that is, uh, added on the bill. And basically the township residents are paying about $23.78 per thousand gallons.
What's provisional, sorry?
Uh, not sure what all those are, Jim, that you'd have, you'd have to talk with the township, I mean, we, we can only set our rates. That's our limit and we would be remiss to make any comment regarding any of those within the township. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So for the city, um, their bill when it comes for 6,000 gallons is about $96.
Yes, you have, yes, you have that.
It's a hundred and seventy six dollars. That was our last.
Uh, are you talking about, are you a city resident or a township? Okay. All right, this is what they would be, this is what they are. Because I just got mine, 17,000. So mine was, uh, $210.84. That's what my bill was. For 17,000 gallons.
Yeah, Elpina Township is not, is not paying the city of Elpina customer rate of $10.38. They are and have been paying the same rates since 2010-11 of $6.38. And they're basically generating $17.40 more for every thousand gallons they deliver.
Quick question. So if they were to pay today, current.
We would, we'd, 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 we'd. Would there be another question? Yes, ma'am.
It's Baker, Dallas, Ryan. So because you're in rate segregation, that's why you're not probably getting much. And that $8.07 is probably for our maintenance of our sewer and water so that we don't get like, we have people who take care of our problems. We definitely want to.
I think we'll, we'll, we'll.
We'll address that.
We'll address that portion as well. At, at Elpina Township.
Was there another question? Yes, ma'am.
I have a comment today.
Well, we'd like to have the comments at the end.
Well, I'm talking about in the township, we have some protections to our jobs.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have like, and then just have a question that is, and held in reserve.
That I can't, that we cannot address. I mean, again, the rates within the township and what they're used for are, that's a decision of, of your board. Uh, they, they do that. All we can tell you that we, we, what we do here at the city is, is what I'm currently paying.
It makes the township feel a little less, because we are maintaining our own system. You're not maintaining theirs anymore.
It's, it's basically a cost of doing this. Uh, I mean, if you, you know, the fact, fact that they elect to resell that water, they, they have to have, they have certain responsibilities. They have to, they have to make that. Granted, there is a cost of maintaining their system, but, you know, you, so yeah, you are paying for that cost of maintenance and it's above and beyond what we sell to the township.
But when you charge the city people, you're maintaining their, their system.
And we are also, we maintain the township's portion of the system that provides water to them and brings sewer back to our plant. The thing is, is we don't charge, like, if a line breaks in front, if a line breaks in front of my house, it isn't mine and everybody on my block who pays for it and that's all because the person on the north side up here says, well, that doesn't affect me. Everybody pays. And if a line, right, uh, main water line on the north side, heading up 23 or near there, going into the township where the break, whose primary function is to serve, to provide water to the township, they're not paying that cost alone either. Every rate payer in the city is paying for that because it's a shared expense. That's how all utility systems work. It's a shared expense.
It's a shared expense in the township?
For your system out there, then that's shared amongst the township customers, it's a shared expense. So what's within the township?
But I'm saying though, that in the city, you're maintaining your people.
We're also maintaining the township because if we don't maintain it, they are going to get.
You're maintaining the service lines to that service.
That service to the.
We have the township connected that.
We would have, we would have different rates, obviously, but, um, we could, you want to continue to operate if the township was not a customer, we would go, we would go ahead and continue to operate.
Well, I tell you, if you want rates, the end of the contract, the rates are not affordable. It's not affordable and payable.
Right, yeah. Let us, let us. Let us take it, yeah.
If, if Elpina Township did, in fact, change the current city, city rate, $10.38, it would still generate $13.48 per thousand, um, over what is being charged to them as a city of Elpina customers. Uh, and, and, you know, you could, you could take these numbers and you can suppose all night long, but Elpina Township charged 15.42 without that provisional charge added. And pays the city the $10.36 to do the charge. Uh, it would still generate $5.04. That, you know, very close to what us, city of Elpina, operate, maintain our collection and distribution system.
Now, the only thing we can't do because we don't know the numbers is how the size of their system, of the township system compared to the city. We know how many miles of water and sewer we have, but we don't have, we're not, we don't have those numbers of the township to have a comparison for that. We do know they have three water towers, uh, two, that we do know, uh, but in terms of actual miles of, of pipe in the ground, we don't know.
Since the inception of the new rates in March 2014, the city has billed Elpina Township quarterly at the then current rate, including ready-to-serv charge. Elpina Township has not paid the invoice at all, but has continued to pay the 2010 and 11 rate. ten and eleven rate. This has caused surrogates, including compound and late charges, that are added to each subsequent bill. In September two thousand fifteen invo, the September two thousand fifteen invoice to the township was in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand and three dollars. Now, that, that wasn't just strictly for usage, um, the actual, the bill, the current bill for usage and rate of sewer charge was five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars of that. The balance of that was, um, the liquid charges, surrogates that were assessed on this bill. They paid three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars for those charges, leaving them one point one million dollars in default, on full payment. And I know that, at least we've been told by, by the folks that have called us, is that the rates went up significantly in July first, and it was because the city raised our rates to them. You know, we did, we raised our rates, it went from nine seventy-four to ten thirty, about a five and a half percent increase, is what we increased rates to our customers and to Alpina Township as a customer in the city. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know what their, what, you know, what their rates increased to, or what the percent was increased, but this is, this is what, this is what we, we build on that, is gotten to pay. So, I'm the commander. So, we're pretty much done, and we'll be more happy to answer questions, but this is, oh, yeah, I have to-?
I get my last, my last slide, I get my last. Uh, one, the information that you see on this slide, you can find on our website as you go through. Uh, one thing we found is, we went, come on, starting tomorrow, including this presentation, and at some point tomorrow, the YouTube, uh, taping, and that's, that is up there. And in fact, you can go right to our website, and at the top, you'll see how to connect the little YouTube if you want to listen to this again. Uh, one thing we found in our, probably two to three years of working on this, and dealing with our council, and ours, our rate payers, and the township, is that we did ask a lot of questions, and we are expected to be able to have answers to justify anything that we've written before this body, the public in general, and our rate payers. Uh, our intent is to be as transparent as possible. You can go on our website, find our current budgets, which will show you what our budget is for our fiscal year right now, which started July first and runs through June thirtieth, that's our system. Uh, so there is, that budget's there. Also, it'll tell you, here's what last year's budget, which ends July thirtieth, what the rough numbers are, because they aren't audited yet. But you can also go back one more year, and you have audited numbers. And this will be for every re, bit of revenue that we generate and all our expenses, for water, for sewers, for the water plant, for the sewer plant, the collection system, everything. So, it's there, and it's very, uh, transparent. We also have, uh, other budgets, uh, from previous years in there as well, if you wish to look at them. We also have what's called the comprehensive annual financial report, which is a long way of saying, basically, I audit. Now, I will tell you, that is difficult for me to read, I know it is for Rich, I think it is for a lot of council people, and if you do look at that, which we encourage you to, because those are now the audited numbers, and it courses for all city funds, but the water and sewer are, are in there, those funds. If you have questions, we have a different person just waiting right here to answer most of those, uh, questions, because Karen Hubert is not only our clerk, but our, uh, treasurer finance, uh, and finance director. So, she can probably answer those. Also, the study that was done by Valerie Zuback, that, is that in there?
That will be posted tomorrow.
That will be posted tomorrow as well.
Was, was on there, uh, a minute, a while back, but we're gonna replay that.
If you have questions, and I've had a few, I know the council has had some, feel free to call myself or Rich, I can answer certain ones, others I raise, let you miss. I mean, and if there are ones that we can't answer right away, we will get an answer and give that to you. Uh, the thing is, is that we want to, no matter who our customers are, and in, in, in a way, you are all our customers, because we do produce the water, we provide it to you, it is distributed to you by the township, but you are our customers. Same for sewer, for those who have sewer, it is our plant that treats it, so you are our customers. So, if there are questions, we are willing and happy to answer them.
Regard, I guess regarding this presentation, again, we are not in a position, nor should we be in a position, to try to answer any questions about township billing structure, township rates, how they generate those numbers, you know, what, what the justification is for the numbers that they charge you. We, we can't do that, nor should we.
We would be very remiss if we tried to do that, because that is out of our, uh, purview.
I got, Gary, can I do it again? I, I, and I'm not sure he couldn't even answer this, but, can you give us an idea of what legal fees you have, I think, incurred, and, uh, if, if the litigation has, if one party loses, that, that, if, that saves you win, and the town, the township loses, do we have to, do we have to pay your litigation fees to it?
You can answer the last one, I think, I checked. As far as, if, if, whoever loses, do they have to pay the attorney fees of the other?
The best part is built on retailers, so right now, you have to call out.
My, uh, it's, it's very common for, uh, litigants, attorneys to ask for attorney fees and costs in a lawsuit. And in fact, in this lawsuit, both sides have asked for attorney fees against the other. Very rare to get attorney fees awarded, unless there is a specific statute that allows recovery, uh, for that particular type of case, or if the court made a finding that somebody's position was frivolous.
Are you, uh, free to give us a rumble ball, or you're-?
Yes, I can do that. I can do, do that, as far as the city. One, again, these, all bills that we receive from our outside, bill's on, we pay him salary, he's, he's in our budget. The other, uh, our other attorney, our outside counsel, that is paid out of our water and sewer fund, split down the middle. Uh, to date, we paid ninety thousand dollars, forty-five thousand from yours, uh, each of those funds, and those come out of our capital fund, because those are the only ones that we must pay, operation maintenance, we must pay debt, the only thing we can do is, is take it out of capital, which is where it does come from. We have not, uh, looked to increase any of those, any, uh, any rates to cover those costs, uh, but that is what we are, we are paying to date, and you can always find them. It usually billing comes once a month from our attorney, sometimes we miss a month or two in one month, but it's, again, if you go to our pa, uh, the council package, uh, each meeting, there are bills, there are all the ones, the bills that the council must approve, and you can go down, I think it's Young, I think it is, in fact, it's very, very bottom, but it's Young, and that's the attorney, and you can see what I've these out, so it's, it's, you know, they're very, again, transparent. Is it cheap? No, but, uh, that's what we are today. We, uh, Rich just added up the numbers after our last bill that we just paid last meeting on Monday.
Just a quick question. Um, does, uh, council see any end in sight in the battle? I mean, that's a million dollar question right there, and how it's just gonna last.
I, 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 I'm not one to be really answering that, but, yeah, 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 so, when you do tomorrow, we'll get it covered. Bill, is there an, is there an end in sight to this, or is it, uh, going on adding tonight?
I was, I was trying to explain to her something, but, then, what's the question?
I mean, is, is there an end in sight?
Of the lawsuit?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an end in sight.
Well, uh, there isn't a quick end in sight. Um, there's still, we're still in the discovery phase, uh, that'll last for a while longer, um, and then ultimately, uh, there's some other tools that the court may use to try to help the party settle the matter, uh, but ultimately, if there's a trial, that's probably not likely to occur until, uh, next summer.
Um, Bill, just a moment, I want to clarify, that litigation, well, it was filed in, July or July?
Um, July or August, uh, last year.
Yeah.
So, it's been, it's been a good year.
Really silly, um, chair of Alpina Township, I, I'm just wondering if the million dollar cost is accruing in, uh, late fees?
Yes, it is. There is, there are sheets of that, interest of our users, yes, unfortunately.
Um, this is all kind of comments and questions.
How many's your question?
Um, I, I mean, I put a average rate up there, my rates are bouncing all over, I mean, I'm at this last bill, twenty-four dollars and twenty-three cents per every thousand. That, and March's bill, I'm at twenty-five, something, uh, for, for every thousand. Um, I have been to the township, open with them several times, every time I get my bill, um, the staff, most of the comments are, the city is charging us over and above what we're using. Um, the city is, um, trying to get, uh, uh, the township citizens to pay for the city in the country. Um, I have spoken to the Peter Fattalia's office with no hope coming back from them. I have, um, now come out that I do need to get with those two meters of these, uh, student ordering panels, so I wanted to come to this meeting to get answers, um, before I take this next step. Um, I do appreciate this meeting, um, that you put together, and I do believe that it's more than what we have gotten from, but, but can we do as citizens of the township to act help?
That's probably not true. I didn't want to say a lot, but.
I'm Dorothy Steva, River Street in Alpina. I have attended many city council meetings, almost every one. I've watched them, the city goes through the entire phase. I do not agree with the rate of the sewer charge, however, I understood it, if more people attended all the city council meetings, we all understand what goes on here, and there are a lot of changes we all need to make, uh, important in our lives. I do feel that the city has been very straightforward and honest about everything, they are trying to give you the complete fact. What I see from the city's point of view, and the township billings that I am viewing, and I care about her friend, she's not even there, her bill's over two hundred dollars as well. I think each and every one of you needs to go to Marie twice and your boards, and you need to ask why you are now paying for seven, is it correct, seven thousand gallon minimum? That is the key to this, in my personal point of view. You need to go there and ask why you are not paying for what you're actually using. That is the key to lowering your bills, as far as my uneducated guests in here. But what I've watched and gone through, all these, these, uh, meetings and attended, I feel that that's where you need to make your changes. Go to Marie, go to your board, ask her, why are we not paying for what we're actually using? Why are we paying for the seven thousand gallon minimum? Answer that question, lower it to what we actually use, get your bills, you don't mind paying for what you're really using, lower your own bill, be more conservative, those are your options, but definitely ask them why, what is happening with the additional money from your regular usage up to the seven thousand gallons. There is the million dollar question. Thank you.
Greg, Greg, I want to make sure-?
Marie, where are you?
Greg.
Let's, let's get a grading sent up.
Greg, yes. One thing I do, I wanted to answer a question that I did get to earlier.
Just let me go after you. Did you, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, there was a comment made, and I, I don't remember who made it, but there was a comment made about the, you know, um, the condition of our system. Um, yeah, we, we do have, we do have an old system, um, a lot of our pipes were installed in the fifties, sixties, forties, um, I've got some of the nineteen hundreds biddies out there, still functioning, still working fine. Um, is it falling apart? No. Does it need maintenance? Yes. Um, I think, I think I, just this past summer, after July first, um, we were able to upgrade, um, the equipment at the water plant, to determine exactly what we are putting out into the system. And based on Mike Lewinsky's analysis, um, for the first quarter, uh, we're down to about a half a percent loss in our water system, which is quite frankly unheard of. Uh, the average for a, for a community's water system is anywhere from seven to twelve percent, um, water loss in the system. And like I said, I haven't seen the numbers, I haven't done the calculations, I'm basically on what I was told. Email I got from, from Mike Lewinsky, who operates on my way to my place, unfortunately, due to some personal matters, a good year, and I, we are down to about a half a percent loss in water, and this was phenomenal.
And those are meters at our plant as the water goes out. We had also replaced, at least at the residential level, all our meters, which has been designed along a contingent of the salary, um, and there were those who said, your, your meters are missing by twenty percent, and so we will have that saving, that collection of additional revenue. When the meters went in, did they, were they suddenly a twenty percent better? No. We found that the difference was more about four to five, maybe six percent.
But we also saw a big reduction used by the consumer, as far as what they were aggressively purchasing.
Because what they did was, is they saw, oh, new meters, those are more accurate, maybe we, we need less water, which was also affecting sewer bill. Uh, the other thing is, though, those meters are very, have been very valuable and essential, they're like any other piece of equipment. They, things need to be updated. When you have equipment that's twenty, thirty plus years old, it doesn't operate as well. We replaced them. What we're able to do with the new technology, one, we can read the bills from the, the office there, and I weigh twenty-two, we don't have to send people out to do it. The other is, we can tell if there is a spike, and notify people, and I, we have had a couple occasions, Rich was one, on our, yeah, leaky toilet. He had a spike, and White, White, he was, so, Rich, you know, leak this weekend, you spiked, you, you six thousand gallons overnight, and, yeah, my toilet was fine. Yeah. So, we had that. We had another one where it was a vacant house, the owner was contacted, found out there was a break. If that had been allowed just to contend, not only all the damage it would have incurred, but for three months, a whole quarter, you can imagine what the bill would have been. So, this has been also a very valuable asset for the individual customers as well.
Greg, before you go, before you go, yeah, um, I want to make a quick comment, because, um, I really appreciate everyone coming, and I really appreciate what the staff was able to put together, and, and Angie's comments, and, and I believe I may have talked to you on the phone, um, you sound really familiar with your questions, I don't know, someone much like you, Dan. Um, as far as what you can do, I want to address that really quick, because I don't want this meeting to become a platform for what you should do as township residents about your bills. That's, that's really not our, that, that's not what we're particularly here for, and I would just rather that not be a platform at this particular meeting. Um, but, um, but we did try to, our, our best to provide you with the information that you may or may not need when you go back with questions to the township, or, um, Bill Shooty, or, or Fattalia, or whoever, whatever, wherever direction you go. I just, before the next person comments, I just don't want a back and forth platform for what you should do as township residents. We really don't want to get involved with that. It's more of a data providing platform.
We want to provide information regarding what we do? No. And that is, how our rates were established. And that is, how our rates were established, what they covered, which is by the breakdown, and what we, Bill, the township.
Yeah, I want to put a human fact into all of that. We own property in the city and the township, and as Joe Anthony has, one year was eighteen units. In the city, I paid two twenty-one sixteen, I'm not complaining. In the township, for the same eighteen units, the bill was four thirty-eight forty. This was a family of two, another one was a, a family of two, with two small children, three and five. These bills, in other words, six fifty-two sixty, and they save for three people involved, they're, they're, they're not sustainable, we can't sue them. And, and when you see with the cost list, they tell me on the bill, we have our billing, but we normally got fee charges. Then we have another package, two sixty, seventy-five twenty-four, and seventy-five sixty. That's money that's creditized, and covers the city's debt.
So I, Greg, uh, I get along with you. Oh, actually, this gentleman will be... Go ahead, just...
The total percentage increase that you have done to the township, is it five percent?
The last increase was from the beginning? Well, that's, if you look at it from what they have paid over a four, five year period, with the meter, they've never paid more than what the two thousand ten, eleven was.
What, what did it go up from eleven to now? What should, should it?
It, it's about, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of around sixty percent.
Sixty?
Sixty, six zero. But that's because our rates were flat up until May of two thousand fourteen, with the township, we had no increase, even though they were increasing during that time rates to the individual township users by about six hundred and forty-four.
I'm trying to figure out, I mean, I'd agree with that, and I understand why you guys raised your prices, it makes perfect sense, nobody likes it, but it makes perfect sense. I'm trying to make sure that the, or, I'm trying to find out if the township passed, just passed that on, or if they decided to pad it a little, which I, I'm trying to find out. What I'm trying to find out, is what you raised for the township?
It basically went up from, from six thirty-eight to nine seventy-four.
Okay, so it went from six thirty-eight to nine seventy-four.
That's what it did in, uh, May, well, effective, when I started, when it was passing March, we did go back to May of two thousand...
The total raise since you guys started this whole water...
And then it went up in, in July of this year to ten thirty. It went up another five point five percent.
Was it six thirty-eight originally, up to nine seventy?
Right.
And then to ten thirty?
Well, then to ten thirty.
Then to ten thirty this year.
So it is right now ten dollars and thirty cents a gallon for water and sewer.
Gentlemen? Yeah, well, yeah, well, we're doing that, and that's six twenty, that's now. I have a question for you, how do we know, like, when we give a bill, do we know that the rates that they're charging us are for how many gallons? How do we know by the meter reading that it's true? For mine, I average, because I, I keep all my paperwork in, you know, like that, I average about eleven thousand gallons per use every three months. All of a sudden, now with this new building system, I jumped up to eighteen thousand. I don't know. It was movies in my house, and I'm very good with my house, I check it out. No reason, but how do we know, as a consumer, that the readings, that we are being told are even or true?
I guess, and I guess, I guess, we print the township, in the city, and we had this, where, um, we had an individual that said, we put, we put these new meters in, he said, that meter's not right, that meter's, and, and it was showing that he had constant usage. He said, that meter's defective. We, we went out, we, we pulled the meter, and we tested it, it was a hundred percent accurate. He had some type of leak in his internal system. Uh, but that, that's what we do for our customers, we will walk, we will, we will pull the meter, we'll test it, um...
That, we've even had a couple where we replaced the meter, in terms of it didn't exist enough, and we replaced it, uh, and it's, and it didn't change anything, so that would be the...
Do you have another, or, uh, how many do you have?
I think I could answer this one, if you know what I'm saying.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
I am one of the people that asked Marie about seven thousand gallons, and she told me it was the law. Every county, it's seven thousand gallons. I'm asking the lawyer, is that true?
Just curious, was the township, uh, leadership invited to be present here for this?
No, we're not, not direct, if they wanted to come, they were, they, they certainly were welcome. Basically, this meeting was to resolve with the fact that we were getting numerous calls, and whether it was the council, whether it was myself, whether it was United Water, and what we wanted to do was just say, talking with everybody individually, do we know that they're all getting the same information? So we said, let's just have a meeting, invite everybody here, they see the same information, we hand it out to them, they hear it, they can ask questions, and they give the answer to the question all together. And that's what we did. They were invited, but it wasn't to have a dialogue with the township board, we were basically to have a dialogue with you, because you were coming and having dialogues, and it may not be you directly, but others that we were getting that were dialoguing with us. And we felt we were much more efficient by doing it that way.
One other question, Greg, one other question. If a house is vacant, and then, hours off, then vacant for the whole quarter, what would the city charge be, uh, just through their...
Well, we would have the ready to serve charge, if it's a resident, it would be thirty dollars. It's five dollars a month for water, five dollars a month for sewer, it would add up to thirty dollars per month, that's what they would be paying. Plus the billing charge, plus the five dollars, five dollars and eighty-four cents bill, that's what they would be paying you.
Two way here, I live on Sunday Mae Avenue, couple blocks, yeah. The reason his bill went up so much this time over last time, I think they read the meter like early last time, because my bill for last time was lower than a separate band, and then it was more than made, of course, this time. I think they read it, they...
Well, you could look at, at the date.
Although, the date, the date didn't happen.
I think that, I called, and they said, they read it early, and had added two weeks extra onto that, so...
Yeah.
Well, two weeks, I don't know, well, two weeks to the date perhaps, but not too long. No, but yeah, that's the case of the case.
I'm Virginia Teddy Fisk, and I live on Calver Street, I have a city question.
Okay.
My question is, the city has paid structural rates all these years, didn't anybody anticipate that your lines and everything were going to stay whole? And why was the city paying?
I want, okay, oh...
Was it seventeen dollars a month?
I will, I will answer that, and, uh, so if there's any backlash, it will follow me, not the other. I, for a number, for a long time, and Rich could, we had asked for this, we always had a, we had a table that listed communities throughout Northern Florida, Michigan, and some in the east, in UP as well, comparable commute, just a, of similar size, like the service, so forth. It looked at their rates, of about twenty-four, twenty-five, we were like next to the bottom in terms of our rate, very low. And our council loved that, that was great, you know, we are loved. That's fine, except at some point, you're gonna have to pay the piper, because when you keep them that low, you don't, uh, you don't put the money in the capital in that that you need to. It's not that we're not investing in capital, we are every year. We know we could do more, and we have some that are going to be very big, and it doesn't matter what we creditize, we know we're probably gonna have to bond for that, and then there'll be, you know, some debt, that we'll have to pay. But that was, that was a problem, it's kind of kicking the can down the road. I will give these five people a lot of credit, because they said, the can can't be kicked anymore, we know we're gonna take greed, they did, we did, but they did, because they're the elected officials, and they are the only making decisions on what the rates are gonna be. They told us, you're not gonna do it, we're to pay for three point six million dollars a year, because we're not gonna support that. So we came up with something less than, and I think with the rates we have, it's about one point nine, two million dollars a year that would go into capital. What we call capital, which is for repair, replacement, upgrade, so forth to our system, whether it's in the plant, or out in the streets. Uh, but they did that, they, they took the heat, and they said, we can't do it anymore. Uh, and that's why the rates went up as much as they did in one fell swoop, yes, it would have been better had we been increasing it, you know, an extra five, you know, instead of five percent and three percent a year, we had done it at seven or eight. We did have, what, two years where we increased it ten percent a year. Yeah, but we did a bonding program, and so we had to have that to pay the debt, you know, the debt payments. But other than that, increase has been very modest. And though, you know, Rich can sit down and do his math, and says, this is what we should have, we, we get what the council approves. And the same with the utility for the township, they get whatever the board, the township board supervisors approve as well, or trust me.
My thoughts are, if the city were to raise, the city residents are raised a long time ago, I don't think we'd be having that serious of a problem right now. Because you've got city jumping on you, you've got the township, and, I mean, you could never figure out why the city residents were paying such low bills for their water and sewer, I mean, it's actually, like I've told people, they were giving it to them, to them. It's like you're getting all this for hardly any. And the last comment I have is, thank you for answering questions, and not giving nasty answers back, it's not funny enough when we have to give you the questions. And I think it's very, I feel very, I feel good being here, because I'm not giving all that to them.
Greg, if you'd like me to add one thing to that, I think I would. And I've been here the longest, so I have some part of the old attitude, and it wasn't a, let's say a blatant kicking the can down the road, but it was definitely a sense of pride in the community that we had the lowest rate in the state, and that, that added to the quality of life of our residents, and sure, it would be a tough decision and unpopular to raise it. For me personally, what I felt with is that township residents have always paid less than city residents. So in that thirty-five years, we've charged the township with less than our city people. As a council, we could really only raise the rates on the city residents. And so, for me personally, tough to say, well, our city residents already pay more than the township, yes, we need more money, we need higher rates, but there's no way I can agree to raise it on one group, to leave it down here on another group. So at least personally, for me, was a struggle, because the city already pays more into it than the township. So I just kind of put that out there, besides just the im popularity of it, it would have been tough to tell city residents, say, we're gonna raise it on you, but we can't raise it on the township because of the timeframe, uh, it wouldn't be fair.
But isn't that true in the township? We pay for our water, we pay for our sewer, those were on our tax bills for thirty years, they were on our water bill, we have a lot of money, actually, to pay our fair share. We're just asking for the water. You're not paying for all of our repairs. And how should we pay that?
You know, and I will say this was made very strongly, but we pay for the maintenance of two multi-million dollar facilities, that the city's responsibility, plus our systems, plus the system that takes the heat to the township, so our costs are gonna be high, as far as the infrastructure and maintenance, and certainly the township is paying into that. I, I would want to know if we've been able to explain our ten thirty, and that's a testament to people like Miss Kiba who've come here for the last year, and want to know, where's, write that down for us, show us the fees, show us the charges. I think the easiest question to, to answer is to ask the township, why is twenty-three seventy? And then see if that's a pass, a free answer or not. I think we've, we've done our best to try to explain our, our rate at the ten thirty, and to, to get those same questions from your representative.
Uh, Gary Garcia, one more thing. First of all, I want to thank, I want to thank the city for, for being open and, and honest, uh, the one, the one percent leak each, because I was told that we were, we were gonna be paying you for your, your infrastructure. Uh, if I remember right, at one of the township meetings, I heard that we have a leak rate of about ten percent. And, uh, uh, the other, the other, the other thing is, uh, I go to Florida for, for a few months in the year, and I have another friend, and he went up and asked, uh, the township board, what's, what's this, uh, water in, increase, and he, he was told, uh, go, go ask the city, so thank you for answering our questions.
Gary, when is the next township meeting?
Uh, it's the first Monday of each month.
Okay.
Here it goes, uh, your question, I'm asking Alpena Township, Alpena County Commissioner of the District five, I've been going to our Alpena township meeting some time now. I know the mayor's the position of the platform, but the types of questions that should we ask here, and the types of information the city has provided, are the same types of things, I've been encouraged, my constituents, to go to and ask those questions. Mr. Parte, the city meets pretty regularly at each meeting, and we've been told, some of that increase is for attorney fees, and cost in case we lose the suit, to answer the seven thousand gallon minimum, again, you're gonna be given different answers, you need to pursue those answers. I'd like to thank the city for doing this, I think it's been very beneficial, but to really only finish your answers on the township side, from the township board, that's number seven, Monday, seven costs. Um, here's some other, um, costs, if you might, if you might want to question, some about, uh, level four, GTW director, some of this money, I think, is, is going to, we need, we, or, of course, we have a level four director for our water determines, I don't believe there is, we pay someone else in addition. So there's places where that money's going, it is supposed to put in SPO in case we lose, but you're gonna get different answers, but you need this a lot, because they do have those increases, I've been there when they passed them, and they expect attorney fees, and we're putting it in SPO in case we need.
You really have to pay that. You have to pay that.
Okay, you said, I married Joe Flou, and I live in South. You said that when something is wrong, that John asked the call. I had a leaky toilet, and it ran for two days. I never got a phone call. And, and it was going on other times, because I finally calmed off with my leak, what, as far as that, because it was leaking before that also. Okay, now, on my bill, last November, as a single person, I used sixteen thousand gallons. My bill, my bill, my bill is right here, so I'm reading it. Okay, in July, I was cancer, my bill got higher than the time before. I was in a car accident, and I was in the hospital in July and August. My bill went up a year.
I can't answer that, I don't know, Rich can answer that right now, but it is something that certainly needs to be...
My water going and leaking, uh, it went from, uh, two thousand to four thousand, and I was not notified like you said that, District five should have been.
Oh, oh, okay, oh.
So to answer your first question, we can still pull that up at our billing office. If you wanted to see exactly, you know, your water usage over time, you can still pull that up at the, at the office.
Because I got it right here.
Yeah, no, we can pull your, 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 if you have questions on that specific bill, we can go back to that. We can... we can go back to that, we can get that information for you.
Okay, I'll be down there.
A lot of time and I have from the, uh, Washington Avenue. I started the most recent, there's quite a few things that, um, are very absent from all the financials and all the numbers and, and all of the stories that are floating around and stuff. The most recent is, uh, there was a claim that the water meters were under reading and so we had to put in brand new water meters. Well, instead of getting a sixty dollar replacement, uh, we got sold a bill of goods and we got thousand dollar replacements. And, uh, turns out, oh, that wasn't the problem and, and so there's a lot of false data and, uh, the city got induced to sign a fat contract with United Water for eight years, uh, making a tremendous amount of money. Uh, and so there's millions of dollars that went into the water meters. Uh, before that, the city, uh, built brand new offices that, that water, the sewer plant for themselves. It didn't benefit the, the water and sewer customers at all. And before that, they spent a large, millions of dollars on beautification, over controlled to benefit the boat harbor. And, uh, they have used the, the water and sewer contractor to manage the place for many, many years, promising, you know, big, big savings that never materialized. And it's, it's on and on and on, these types of things. And the bottom line is the township and the city, we're all in the same boat. We all do the same things, you know, we have the same service, the same system. And it's a lot of the expenses that, uh, went for everything but sewer and water and maintaining the system. And now the, the city finds that, uh, they don't have the money, that they haven't been fixing the place. They've been spending the money on everything else. And so now they're just stocking it through anybody and everybody that they can under any excuse that they can. And we're paying the bill, uh, for all of that. Where a lot of the millions and millions of dollars that, that didn't have anything to do with it should come out of the general fund and be put back into the sewer and water fund. And then we wouldn't have near this bigger problem. I, I wish for, thank you, we have.
Thank you. Now, are there anybody else? If not, I'll be here hoping.
I'm Rachel Baker. I also live in the city. I'm for the negative. Thank you. I'm just curious to know, what do you think, uh, what do you think the average increase on a quarterly bill has been for a family of two? Do you have any ideas, do you have any, you know, from what it was prior to the new meters and the, and the additional rate increases, whatever? What do you, what do you think has gone from to present day?
Well, I can't say, I can tell you to myself, which is.
Okay, that would be good. I know you live in the city.
Yeah, we people that too.
Right, okay.
Uh, I probably, before the rate increases and everything else, it was probably anywhere from, uh, sometimes a hundred ten, but up to a hundred thirty or forty dollars a, a quarter.
You use more water than we do.
Now, it's, and this is a higher month because I think I have a sudden, it takes very long salary. We went up, uh, this quarter, but it was two hundred and ten dollars. So again, it went up probably, I've seen generally about maybe a sixty to seventy dollar increase a quarter.
Which means. The time went from an average of around fifty, because don't get me, across the north of town, we're not there all the time, and now we're almost, almost to two hundred dollars a quarter. From right over fifty some dollars to over two hundred dollars a quarter. That seems excessive. And I just multiply that by every household in the city of Elquina. And that's just, I hope you're using that money really, really well because it's hurting a lot of people. And I really feel that we really were kind of like, I just never thought the percentage increase would be that great within one, maybe one and a half years. Thank you.
Uh, I would add, I guess, this is my own personal comment, so this does not reflect the opinions of the council that are possibly rich or the attorney. But, uh, one thing I look at when, when I look at water, water insurance rates, especially the water part of it, is when you start looking at your bills, your electric bills, what you pay a month, and what I pay a month, I'm elected, what I pay cash, which fluctuates by the season very much. Then everybody, you've got your, your phone bill, your, uh, which may be cell phones. Then you add in your cable bill, which may also include a phone and, uh, internet. And you look at all those, you're often spending, could be fifty, seventy dollars for over a hundred, even towards seventy dollars a month. If you took any one of those items, in reality, people can live without any of those things. You can live without electricity. I think it'd be difficult, we'd be going back a couple hundred years, but people have been doing it for a long time. There is one item that nobody can live without, and that's water. If you don't have it, you don't have, uh, if you don't have civilization, you don't have anything. And I look at, okay, I spend two hundred dollars and if I take the water part of it and of course, we need the sewage too, but even at a quarter, that's roughly seventy dollars a quarter. For a month. That's roughly most of all my other bills that I pay every month.
Because it's a huge increase, a huge percentage increase. My electric bill has not increased by that high of a percentage. None of my other utilities. And you're right, water is essential. So in a way, it's like we're all being held over the barrel.
And, and I do, and everybody, I can't, and I cannot, and I can certainly not, you know, I understand your point.
I'll pay the bill, right, you know what?
And I understand.
People who really can't, you know, I mean, just think about that. I mean, from fifty to two hundred dollars, I'm not a math major, but that's a pretty high percentage within a year. None of my other utilities have gone up by that much. I mean, it may have been too low. I agree with this lady, to my luck, it may have been that we were too low and needed to go up. I'm not arguing about an, an increase, just the amount of the increase and all it wants.
If it happens to be usage, you know, if it's not usage, not usage, you know, anybody with usage questions in the city limits anyways, um, we encourage, encourage, encourage anybody to call. If you're, if you see your usage has gone up or you think anything looks funny, call us. So we have those new years for a reason. We can go back, um, you know, as long as we've had them, um, for usage. We can see flights, whether it was a flight for one day, it went for two days. We can, um, we're, I'm, I'm encouraging everybody to call because a lot of the questions that people have on high bills, we can ask those questions, you know, because of the logic and, um, it helps people a lot. No, we can't do that for the township, but we can do that for the country.
You have, and thank you. But no, this is not usage. It's just.
It's our, no other question. We again, thank you all for coming. Appreciate it very much. And, uh, if you have any questions.